Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming. We've got the whole session ahead of us tonight. I was challenged at the airport committee meeting. It was what, like fifteen minutes long? And I said, there's no way our council meeting can be that short. We have three public hearings, one at six fifteen, one at six thirty, and six forty-five. And as we get to the end, we will be going into a closed session to discuss an offer on real property located at 122 Washburn Avenue. I won't read the parcel number, that's in the agenda there. And my report, I did have a meeting with a couple individuals from Serenity Path. That's actually coming through here on new business item A. We had a Stearns County Municipal League meeting that, was that last?
Last Tuesday.
Yeah, that was last Tuesday. Had our League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting that we attended. We listened to the wellness program discussion there. And that's going to be, going to get an update there, old business item A. And as I mentioned, we had an airport commission meeting. We've got two items on the agenda from there. The CIP, new business item C, on a tea hanger update, and a ward of grant notice on old business item C. And I'm going to pull out from the consent agenda item D. That's going to need, I think, some discussion. So we'll move that down to new business E, if that's all right. And then that is my report. Councilmember LeBeau.
Yes, I also attended the Stearns County Municipal League meeting and the LMC Regional Conference. And we had an area center board meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hertzberg?
The exact same, Stearns County, on the league meeting.
Tag teaming, all right. Then councilmember Ranky.
Yeah, we had an EDEP meeting, joint planning board meeting. We also did the League of Minnesota Cities training and participated in that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
EDEP, and then we had a League of Minnesota Cities meeting. Had a meeting with TAPCO on city science and greater science policies and procedures. And that was it for me.
Cool, all right. Thank you. Then we do have a couple department head reports. Mr. Soyney, fire chief.
See if this works. I guess to start off with, we had calls through July and September. We had ten medicals, one car accident, two fire calls, two alarms, and two gas leaks, and then one other. Currently, we have five firefighter, five firefighters taking EMR training, and three of those are also taking firefighter one and two at this time. We have two positions available for hire on the fire department. The last three months worth of training, we did scene size up, search and rescue, mayday training, post-testing, and mask fitting. Some of the updates we've had on events, we served over eight hundred people, and we've had two very successful fundraisers as far as finances. And on, in September, we got together with Lake Henry Fire Department, Belgrade Fire Department, and then Painesville Fire Department, basically had a meet and greet, and just hung out to get to know more people in the area departments. So that's basically what we've done over the last three months.
Cool, thank you. Any questions? All right, been busy.
Very.
Still looking for two new firefighters then, correct?
Two new firefighters, yes.
All right, thank you. Liquor store manager, Bill.
Yes, can I, your honor, can I go up to the podium for a check presentation, please?
I heard the please, go ahead. Taking your minions up there with you?
Yeah, just walking in.
Oh, okay. Shane didn't wear his white shirt, you know? You can go up there anyway.
This is a good part of the department, I don't know.
This is a relief department.
Right. So every year, since we are city-owned by the taxpayers, and we are encouraged by our association to do different fundraisers, this year, with the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association, we teamed up with Coors Banquet to do a fundraiser for our Fireman's Relief Association. We had one night that the firemen came out and grilled brats, and we had samples of Coors Banquet inside, which was well received by all. And the program ran through September eleventh, but people kept donating, so we kept the boot up at the cash register. So I'd like to present a check to the Fire Relief Association for eleven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And it sounds like we'll be doing this again next year, went very well, so.
Squished together.
Tom, do you want to be in the picture?
We don't get any better money.
My shit.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you to the community for stepping forward.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was great. Everybody was, it went very well, it was very well received. One of the best fundraisers we've done in the store ever. You know, we've done fundraisers off-site with, with tasting things, but this, this one went fantastic. I'm just going to go ahead and do my report while I'm up here. Last council packet, you saw our numbers year-to-date so far, we're up about 2.7%. Profits are even with 2018. A lot of that has to do with beer prices going up, our competitors not going up, so we held. We did go up finally, but, so we hope to make up some ground here in the next couple of months. Our customer counts are down, but the average ring and the items per ring are up, so some positives to look at. We are currently doing pre-audits, as we do every year before, our main audit, and so far, so good. Nothing outstanding that should shake everybody up, but we are, we are going to be closed part of the day, Sunday, December eighth, to do a complete audit. I'd like to start about five in the morning, but I'll probably be by myself. So we'll see how my staff handles that, but we will open as soon as, as soon as the audit is done, like we did last year. Something that's kind of cool, we're, we're seeing statewide an increase in non-alcoholic sales. So you're going to see us advertising more with non-alcoholic products and trying to keep up with, with, with the trends. We're also doing things called mocktails, which are non-alcoholic drinks that you can take certain different kinds of mixes. In fact, the upcoming newsletter, we have one in there for the holidays. So we're kind of taking advantage of that as well. And then our next wine club is November twenty-first, Thursday night, at the Legion. So that's my report, unless anybody has any more questions.
Questions for Bill? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing part of your staff along.
I'm just dozy.
All right, then we have the consent agenda before us. The note, our update there, that there is a change in the title of one of the minutes. The vouchers on page two totaling one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, eight thirty-two and four cents. The resignation of Darlene Lowen from the Airport Zoning Board and reporting John in her place. They can just pass the notes from one to the other there. And then the personnel grade advancement of Jason Ruhoff. He successfully passed as Water Supply System Operator, so that would be moving him from grade six step three to grade seven step three. That's up to thirty-nine thousand, seven twenty-eight forty-five effective October eighth of this year. And that is it for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the consent agenda discussion. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Not carried.
All right, and our first item is, we received a letter from Serenity Path. They would like to get out of their rental building downtown and purchase one. And yep, if you want to go up there and address this, and, welcome, James.
Thank you. My name is James Brunz. I'll be taking over as the executive director of Serenity Path here in Painesville. We're currently located at 117 West James Street. We're renting currently. It came to my knowledge that a building, the old Color Max building, was up for sale, and the board unanimously voted to seek to purchase that building for Serenity Path's outpatient treatment program. In order for us to transfer our license, we would have to have a letter of need from the county commissioners. I felt it was in good form to come to the city council and ask for a letter of support in doing so. So that's what I'm here for today.
Well, I'll make the motion to support the move of Serenity Path from 117 James Street West to 111 James Street West, and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Ranky to support the move of Serenity Path from 117 James Street West to 111 James Street West, and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support, discussion. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Not carried.
I figured that would happen, and I figure the county commissioners will approve that too, and look forward to moving and getting you into some bigger space.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for showing up, okay.
No problem.
Yep, we'll get that in signing in the mail, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we do have a few minutes here, so we'll get into the 2020 Town and Country Day Street Dance. Winter's not even here, now we're looking forward to summer, but that's okay. Shane from the other part of the fire department, and Diane?
I have to, I have to wait.
Moral support, yes. We want, we want to know that the chamber is with us, too.
Absolutely.
Yep.
My name is Shane Schmidt, this is Diane Cadet. Both of us are on, are part of the committee for the Backdraft BASH event. And we are requesting to change the location of the event from the Painesville High School to the Civic Arena out in the Painesville Township. You need to know why, or what?
Well, some of us know why.
Some of us would like to know.
Yeah, for the, for the benefit of our listening audience.
Okay, so, um, every year, we obviously want to make this event a profitable event and also a bigger event. And one of the things that we struggle with every year is the weather. So because it is an outside event, if we have bad weather, we either have to spend money on renting a tent, and we also have attendance that is down. So last year, we ended up having that situation where, because of the location we were at, we ended up spending sixteen hundred extra dollars to rent a tent for that event, and our attendance was down by over a hundred people. Which then, obviously, that's a trickle effect because of our sales and admission and all that stuff. So by moving it to the Civic Arena, it's a more secured area as far as we could have the event either inside the arena, or we could have it outside where they have that ice arena as well. So we wouldn't have the factor of the weather. Is, I guess, the biggest reason why we would like to move that event. Also, talking with Bill from the liquor store, it's costing us more money to purchase the three-two liquor, or the three-two beer that the school requires us to only purchase, where if we go with the regular standard alcohol, then we're actually saving money on that end as well, because we're in the township versus on a school premises.
Then you're aware that you'll need to get full-blown dram insurance?
What's that?
You'll need to get full-blown dram insurance if you're going to go with strong beer. Three thousand dollars. No.
Is that the township's?
No, it's state law.
Or state?
They're, they're going to need a full-blown liquor license.
Even, even for a one-day event? I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, maybe.
Yeah, I guess we were unaware of that as well.
I'll get you some information.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yep, that's basically informational, only no action needed on our part, so thanks for bringing that up.
Your honor?
Yep.
You will, council will need to take action to allow it or not allow it because of insurance. I'm not sure insurance is going to cover.
If it's out in the township?
Yeah, so they'll want to know that the council supports or not.
Even, even though it's kind of a area fire department? Supported by the area?
Also, the Chamber of Commerce has event insurance, and as we found out when we had some generator issues, that both insurances, we gathered it from both sides, the fire department and the chamber event insurance, and so that's something that we would continue to do, and they can be outside into the township. We'll have to do more checking on, the liquor license is going to be the, the thing. We had a lot more sponsorships last year, a lot more interest. We were thinking of having, you know, a softball tournament, or a beanbag tournament, or something to keep people involved and keep them in town, along with the carnival. And so we'll be looking at that, but this was our first step to see if we could do that before we move forward.
Yeah, speaking with Renee in the past, she said being that the fire department is city-owned, that's why we needed to come to the council meeting to discuss with you guys as well.
Okay, so we can approve or authorize it to go forward, and then we'll see what happens? Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go to the council, Lynn. Are we good wait, because we have a hearing?
Because I'm good with it moving forward, but I'd like to know what the possible ramifications of that are going to be. I think there's too much hypotheticals right now for us to make a motion.
All right, we'll put our other next agenda, and with that, we will recess the council meeting and call to order the tax, rent, finance, public hearing that has been set for the OPAT's assisted living. We have Jessica show it up now, I heard you were delayed in traffic a little bit there, so thank you for showing up. And we have a fresher face than Ed, who used to do this, from Alcheeta down there. So we have Jessica from Northland Securities, nice to see you again.
Mayor, council, good evening. I apologize for my tardiness, there was quite the accident on ninety-four, and it was closed near Maple Grove. So I took a very interesting route to Painesville today, so I'll have that in my back pocket if that ever happens again. The city has received a request from Fortitude Senior Living of Painesville for financial assistance in the form of tax increment financing. Per state law, the city is required to hold a public hearing when considering tax increment financing assistance, and that's what we're here to do tonight. You do have the draft TIF plan included in your packet, along with a proposed resolution that is a little bit further down on your agenda, so we can certainly handle this either way. We can go through the plan now if you'd like to, or you can open the public hearing and take comment from any interested persons that are here to speak to the district.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go through the.
The plan?
Plan.
Sure. So, again, the request has come from Fortitude Senior Living of Painesville for the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District 1-16 here in the city. The proposed district would include one parcel of land, that parcel is located near Highway 55, the route that I just took to get here, with access off of Spruce Street currently. The proposed development would be for a forty-seven unit multifamily housing facility with approximately twenty-one percent of those units, or ten units, set aside and considered affordable. Maximum duration for typical housing districts can go up to twenty-five years from the first year where increment is received, so a full maximum duration would be twenty-six years total. Based on the information that we've received from the developer and the analysis that Northland has done, we are recommending a twenty-year district for the city. The first year of increment would be elected to be in 2023, that would be the first full year of increment, which means the final TIF district would be decertified in 2042 at the very latest. Estimated annual increment is approximately forty thousand dollars per year, beginning in 2023. Over the life of the district, we are approximating that nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, with a present value of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars at a four percent rate of return, would be generated by the district. Revenue would not be generated but for the construction of the project, which would not proceed without the increment financing that's being proposed here. The city may elect to retain up to ten percent of the increment for your administrative costs, and the remainder would be going towards the developer to reimburse for costs associated with the project. Reimbursement to the developer would be in the form of a TIF note, the maximum amount that we're proposing is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a rate of return of five point two five percent. The TIF note may be paid sooner than the twenty-year term, excuse me, should increment be greater than what we are seeing here, or what, if the value is greater than what we're proposing. A development agreement would be drafted and entered into between the city and the developer at a later time. Construction is supposed to be starting next spring in 2020. The development plan that you do have before you in your packet is in draft form, so we can make any changes that the council wants to see. There are a few changes that Northland would propose to do, just to clean up a few of the areas in the TIF plan. The first is on page two in section two point zero one. There's some language in there, it's the very first sentence, and it refers to the modification of the development district and the objectives of the district. That language is typically used when we're setting up a new development district. In this case, we're currently modifying the development district that occurs here in Painesville. The boundaries of that development district are coterminous with the city boundaries. What we're doing here is to modify that district to allow for the new tax increment financing district. And I know that most of you are familiar with TIF, but each district needs to essentially reside within a larger development district. So again, that development district, the boundaries are coterminous with the city boundaries, the development, or the, excuse me, the tax increment district would be that single parcel that we're considering. The second change that I would suggest changing is section three point zero four point seven, that's on page eight. That language should actually read that the first increment is going to be received in 2023. The second sentence actually refers to 2021, and that's incorrect. And then the decertification date should be twelve thirty-one of forty-two, which would allow the final payment to the developer to occur in the first part of 2043, based on the receipt of tax revenue. And then finally, Bill pointed out today that Exhibit One, the first footnote mentions twenty-six years, which is the maximum duration allowed for housing districts. Again, we are proposing that twenty-year district would be used in this case. We did distribute the TIF plan to both the county and the school district, invited them for comment. To date, I certainly have not received any, I don't know if Renee has, it sounds like no. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have on the TIF plan, the resolution. I do believe we have representation here today on the project, should you have any question for the developer.
Your honors, I did get one call from.
Jim Pastor?
Jim Pastor, and him and his wife would like to support the project and are encouraging the council to approve the TIF district. He is one of the neighbors.
Questions from the council of, Jessica, about the, if, or Tom, about the project? Anybody?
I just, you mentioned at the beginning that it was multifamily, is it still intended to be senior, or?
Senior.
Okay.
I guess silence is golden, not necessarily consent all the time. So if there's no other questions or comments from anybody, we will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting, and if the council so desires, we can act on old business item E, and Jessica back on the road, and Tom on the road. Hopefully, things will be cleared by the time you get back. And Bill, you've got all the recommended changes noted?
Well, I do. Jessica had sent them to me earlier in an email, but I assume you're going to reprint it with the changes? Yeah.
Okay.
I'll distribute that back to both her name and her surname.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2019-33, Resolution approving modification to the development program for Development District Number One, and the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number 1-16 within the Development District, and the proposed adoption of the tax increment financing plan related thereto.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve Resolution 2019-33, is on page two there with those suggested changes. Everybody understands that? Any other discussion or questions? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Not carried?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll get that all rolling, thank you, Tom. And people that have talked to me about it are looking forward to that program going.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Drive safe.
Drive carefully.
Hey, we got a couple minutes before the next hearing. We go to the Airport CIP on page twelve. As I had mentioned earlier, coming through the Airport Commission, we have our airport manager here, Ron.
Chuck is going to handle it.
Well, Chuck is going to handle, okay, you're going to pass that to your, your lovely assistant there, our city engineer.
In your packet is a copy of the Airport CIP. As the council may recall, this is something we have to submit annually to the FAA and MINDAeronautics, just outlines future projects at the airport. And funding year 2019 is the hangar project. I think everybody's aware that that project is a size where we're, where we're borrowing a bunch of entitlements from Buffalo, Aiken, and Litchfield. So the next three years of 2020, 2021, and 2022, we'll, we'll be repaying those entitlements. So the, from a project perspective at the airport, we'll just simply be repaying those over the next few years. Looking further out in 2023, there's a partial AOP update planned in 2023, and that's looking at runway length and the crosswind one runway. And then looking out to 2024, gets into a pavement rehabilitation project. That project in addition does get to be a fairly large project. There are federal discretionary funds above and beyond our entitlement dollars that will, hopefully, will be able to trigger for that project, so. Then moving forward into the longer-term years, there's possibly a look at a parallel, parallel taxiway, and then just some pavement maintenance, some crack repair projects every few years to maintain the integrity of the pavement out at the airport.
Move to approve the Airport CIP?
I'll second. Motion made, Ranky, seconded by Gilmore, I think I heard him a little bit louder here. Any discussion on that? The reminder that this is just a plan to help for budgeting and that. Any other discussion or questions? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Not carried? Okay, and, just double-check the time here, so, like, six twenty, we have two minutes to take care of the actual services for the city. We did this for the Relief, Fire Department Relief Association previously. Go ahead, Renee.
Um, this is, it, it does have a slight increase of about five hundred dollars. It is to address changes in Gasby. We will now move to Gasby 75. Again, it deals with payroll and retirement benefits. Is there any questions?
Or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for consulting services for actual services for the City of Painesville, G A S B 75, between the City of Painesville and Hildy Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made, Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the agreement for consulting services from Hildy, as on page sixteen of the agenda and an action sheet discussion. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Not carried? And it is six thirty, so we will again recess the council meeting, call to order the public hearing in regards to the lot split request from Darwin Building Corporation, affectionately known here as perennial, in the perennial bank area, Jeb Johnson this year, to tell us what you're going to do.
Jeb Johnson, on behalf of Darwin Building Corporation, so we've got a, as part of our lot, there's a rectangular piece that runs back behind the bowling alley and behind the old funeral home, and we were just, we need a lot split. in order to give that to the Community Service Center. We approached them and asked them if they wanted it, and they said they would, so that's why we need the formal lot split in order to do that.
If you, I think if you look on page 57 in your agenda, it kind of shows the rectangle is kind of highlighted in orange and the structure that the Community Service Center, the aerial photograph's not completely accurate. They, that old shed is there, but you know, they built that. Anyway, you know, I mean, without that, the Community Service Center has access to Lake Avenue, but not to the alleyway, and they like the idea that vehicles from the alley can get into that side door and the back door of the Community Service Center, so. Benefits them, they, it gains them that access to the alley.
Interesting how those parcels get set up like that. If that was an alleyway at one time and...
I don't think it ever was.
Ever was?
Not that I could tell. I went through the abstract and it didn't appear that it ever was.
Anybody here to say for against the, in regards to the hearing? Any questions from the council? If not, we will close the hearing and reopen the city council meeting, and it would be appropriate to deal with Item E under Old Business at this point in time.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-32 granting the lot split.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve Resolution 2019-, whoops, I went right by it, 2019-32 granting lot split. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? Thanks, Jeb. All right. That taken care of then. And then we have a few minutes before the next hearing. So we're up to the AMPI well area site on page 28, and Chuck?
I guess I'll take that one.
You'll take that one. I should look at my notes better, I guess, here.
With the AMPI project, one of the items that's in the building or new building out there will be a screening system. Screening system will require up to 50 gallons a minute of water. Our city water being where it's located, it's not practical to bring it out to this site at this time. So we did get two quotes, and they're very close. First from Steinwell at $15,048, and then the second from Trout at $15,325. The Public Works Committee, we did review this, and they have recommended the quote from Steinwell.
And with the note there, this was, is budgeted for?
Right, this is budgeted in that process, and it's just due to some administrative reasons that we had intentionally left it out.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Steinwell, the amount of $15,048. I'll second that.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore to approve the quote from Steinwell, the amount of $15,048. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose? None? And that carried? And then with the 2020 election around the corner, we're looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-31, designating polling place for the March 2020 presidential primary election, and that will again be at the Area Center.
Yep. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2019-31, designation of polling place for the March 2020 presidential primary election.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey, as on the action sheet, page 31. You've heard it and can read it. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose? None? And that one carried? And Item A under Old Business, Police and Fire Wellness Plans?
Wait, you dropped down G.
Oh, that's right.
Joint Planning Board.
That's right. The one that I took out of the consent agenda, alternate member needed for joint planning board. And with scheduling and that, it's been recommended that we look for alternate member. I'd suggest alternate members. I would suggest one from staff or an alternate for you, and then one from the council in case Sean can't make it that way. We're covered on both aspects, and I would suggest Jennifer.
I would concur on that. The township is also selecting alternates.
Okay.
So that we can keep these meetings progressing.
I would volunteer to be the council representative.
Cool. Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to appoint Jennifer Welling and Alicia LeBeau as alternates to those so made. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose? None? All right. Well, that board has kind of been a little spotty in meeting lately, and, well, we won't get into that. Okay. Then on to the Police and Fire Wellness Plans. We've got some information that's been coming in, and Renee's got a little bit of an update there. We did have a session on that at the League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting, and I think we're getting close to setting a meeting date with Alicia and...
Yeah, hopefully. Hopefully by the end of this week. I've gotten, I did contact Joyce at the league regarding the free memberships and forwarded them to Bill to see if we have any issues with them, with the gym memberships or the discounted gym memberships. I do got, I'm sorry, I did receive from Plymouth, I had a really nice conversation with Chief Goldstein. He is an advocate for the wellness programs and has been for quite some time. He did send me their policy and a lot of other documents that he's been traveling around the country promoting. And I did get also information from the CISM team that was suggested from Tracy Still at the League of Minnesota Cities, which is a professional peers group that can come and help do counseling for critical incidents. And then I'm waiting for a quote from Laura Dale from ESI regarding a full care employee assistance program, which could be beneficial to everyone that would address everything from finances, childcare, alcoholism. They can help with a great deal of other things. And then I'm waiting on the Farmington's wellness policy and then that quote from, on the EAP. I did ask the chief from Plymouth, they do include their fire, their full-time firefighters in their wellness program, but they're volunteers, it's on a volunteer basis. I did ask him about retirees, and he said that he was at a conference in Chicago last weekend, and that at that conference, they started talking about retired firemen and how to work with them, and he said if Plymouth decided to include them, there would be some monetary amount that they would ask retirees to participate in since they're no longer active and on the payroll. But I would say, I called Farmington again today, and hopefully by either Thursday or Friday, whichever day works best for Alicia and Jeff, we should be able to sit down and go through the documents we have and be able to put a policy, a revised policy possibly together for council on the 12th.
Would it not make more sense to bring this into policies and procedures so that the chiefs can sit down with all those documents and work on a policy that's going to work with their departments as well, rather than do it behind closed doors?
I'm not doing anything behind closed doors.
Policy and procedures is an open meeting?
Policies is open. These labor negotiation meetings, by my understanding, are not, they're all closed and not open to the public. I mean, I'd be happy to be wrong, but then I'd like to come to the next meeting, but it's my understanding that these were not public meetings where these were being discussed.
At the last meeting, the city attorney was there regarding legal labor union negotiations, so the chief was not invited to attend. And if a quorum of the council is there, only two council members can speak, the other person must stay silent, because otherwise it's a violation of open meeting law.
Unless you list it as a council meeting. I mean, you'd have to notice it as a council meeting if you have more than two.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that this next meeting, when we discuss this, will be an open meeting?
Could be posted as an open meeting, as long as there's not any action.
Well, it's a union negotiation team that's working on this, so we don't post your meetings because union negotiation items aren't open to the public.
But we're not actually discussing a union negotiation item, are we? This is a city policy that we're discussing?
Well, it could also be that EAP, you could decide to put that in place, only to give the unions support on that. The chief would like to participate, is what I'm hearing.
Then we just post it as a council meeting, and whoever wants to show up, shows up. Correct?
Yep.
Anybody can talk?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you post it as a special council meeting, I guess, then as many council members as would like to be there can be there, and they can...
Yeah. I would have no problem with that. You know, the thing I've been finding on this is that the more questions that are answered, the more questions that are raised, because, you know, now we're into, you know, compensation and IRS and tax issues for...
Free memberships.
Or benefits of memberships that are granted. We need to get it taken care of. We'd like to have a policy in place by the first of the year, and I guess however is the easiest way to do that. And if we start getting into compensation, that's a, that's a potential labor issue. Correct?
Have we had anybody review the policy that has been submitted to us from the chief to see, make recommendations on how to modify that?
There's not, I mean, I could send, I don't know who you'd want me to send it to.
Could you send it to Tracy from, that spoke at that, what's his name, from the regional conference?
I can.
I just would like to see what his opinion is on, you know, what the chief has put together, and then maybe we could go from there.
You've got your opinion from your labor attorney on sections not to implement.
Right, but part of her advice, she had a problem with the chaplaincy program, and at that meeting, the Wake Park Police, that was his thing that he said cities could take their first step would be to put in place a chaplaincy program, so. You know, there's that. I don't know if the opinion from our labor attorney, it seems conflicting when you have a police chief saying, put in place a chaplaincy program, and you have a labor attorney saying that maybe that wouldn't be a good idea, so. Seems like a dilemma to me. I'm not really sure how to handle that.
I can send it to whomever the council would like me to send it to.
Would you prefer that I send it?
No, I can send it. Just you just want to go to Tracy.
I would like you to send it to Tracy. Yeah.
He is not a labor attorney, or an attorney of any kind.
Right, but he is also, he's somebody who has worked to put these in place for other departments, correct?
The gentleman from Plymouth has. He's, he's been working on these since 2013.
Who is that?
The chief, Goldstein.
Oh, could you send it to him as well, then? It'd be great to get his input.
Sure.
Thanks.
Because I believe, I think Plymouth has a chaplaincy program as well, is my understanding in talking to some folks at the league, but maybe I'm misremembering.
Yes, I do.
Yeah. So there's got to be a way of making that legal. I mean, the military has all types of chaplains. Can't tell me that suddenly it's not right here, so.
I don't think it's the chaplaincy program, it's the city paying the priests to go get the training. That's the...
But I think perhaps the dilemma was that the city, the labor attorney maybe didn't understand what type of training we are talking about for chaplaincy. Like, it's not actually religious training, but she sounded like she thought it was religious training. So that was another question that we were going to, I thought, look into. I don't know if anything has come about of that, but...
We're going to go into our other hearing here and come back to this since it is time for that sort of recessed council meeting and call to order the 6:45 public hearing in regards to the funding request. I think all are present now. The, yep, everybody is here, and that is, let's see where we actually, 6:42, and Community Ed is first on the list here. Matt, lucky Matt. You're looking at it in reverse order, huh?
All these years, I think this might be my first time going first.
You weren't here first, but...
Lucky day. Okay, you all have a copy of my report in your packets?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So 2019 participation numbers were strong, as you can see when you open up the program there, over 1,100 participants. You can see the breakdown between city and township. Same amount requesting as in the past. I didn't look back, but probably at least 10 years or more, probably the same partnership agreement. And inside, you can see all the different programs. We continue to offer even more STEAM and STEM activities, and now with our new innovation center, we'll see even more of those next year, so. Any specific questions you have for me on the report or programs offered? We appreciate this partnership. I've been here now going on 21 years, and I know that was in place before, well, before I came too, with the support between the city and the township, so that's how we're able to offer the programs for the prices that we do for our residents.
No? No questions? So we are going through the budget process, and again, a reminder to all that we can approve these, but we do require written requests for funding once that they are approved and the programs are... All right?
Yeah, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Matt. And then Painesville Area Center. Bert?
Welcome back. Bert Stanley, representing the Painesville Area Center as a board member. I believe you all have received in your packet a letter and our budget, proposed budget for the year. We are requesting a 5% increase over what we previously received for programming, not a donation, but programming from the city. This year, the amount is $9,187 with the 5% increase, which we're asking you to consider. We understand the city is in budget constraints, just as we are. As you look at our budget, we're at a deficit for the year on our projected budget. We do have two new projects that we're just starting, one being that we're renting some office space to the chamber for a monthly fee, and second, we're going to start as of next Tuesday, working with the Lions on bingo and receiving some remuneration from that. So between those two new endeavors and with the help of the city, we do hope to at least come close to meeting our budget. If not, we'll find some areas that we need to cut. At this point, there's about 100 people a day come to the Area Center for one thing or another. Any questions?
Anybody? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. And you bring up a good point, that these are not donations, these are in payment or services that are provided within the community that in many communities, the city actually has to take on themselves. All right, then then, last but not least, Painesville Historical Society. Ha, both of you. Hop, both of you.
Well, I wasn't going to talk, but all of a sudden he said I should say something. My name is Vicki Genegas, I'm the board president of the historical society. I was just going to tell you a couple of things about our summer, how it went. When Brian was a full-time employee, we were open twelve months out of the year. If the car was there and there wasn't snow in the parking lot, you could stop in. Now that he's gone on to a different job, we hire staff again for the summer. So June first through Labor Day. And this year, we had Annabelle Ball, it's her second year, which is always good to have a repeat staff member, they know what's going on. And we also had Stephanie Jensen, who happens to have Haynesville connections. And between the two of them, they came up with a lot of innovative ideas. Stephanie is a teacher and she loves kids and so she came up with a list of things that we could probably try and we ended up doing the visit with a vet every Thursday and hoping that we could, we made some calls to vets and had them come for an hour, just had coffee and cookies and people came in and visited and talked and it was really wonderful. We had some really emotional talks and some lots of laughs and so that's one way that we can do things for the community. Also, I happen to be looking back on when the museum was started and this is the fiftieth year, started in nineteen sixty-nine. We're having our annual meeting coming up November nineteenth. We're going to be holding it at the area center because it'll be winter and dark and snowy and blustery, so we're going to focus on our farming community. So we want to focus on changes in farming and we'll also talk a little bit, have scrapbooks out that talk, show you pictures over the last fifty years. So if you can come to that, it's open to the public and we invite you for that. Thank you.
All right. Now as Vicki.
Want to tell us a story?
Want to tell you a story? No, I don't have a story today.
Okay, good.
Sob story.
Oh.
Like Vicki said, we've got some great summer staff right now and Stephanie even has carried over and is doing a few tasks throughout the year that we can afford to have her do. That being said, the events, everything that we do down there, of course, doesn't pay for itself, so we need money. And I'd just like to thank the city for historically being our biggest supporter and supporting us year in and year out. This year, we're asking for six thousand dollars and that will aid us in paying for the staff and as well will aid us in keeping our lights on, keeping the heat on, keeping it cool in the summer and all that good stuff. There has been times in the past where the city has helped us out in situations where it's not money that we need and we, we kind of find ourselves in a, in a situation like that now. If you all remember Wes Neering, Wes was great in coming down once a week, mowing the lawn. He would try to get somebody down there to spray for us when he could. You know, years ago, he would, he would help fertilize, he would do the weed whipping, he would do tree trimming, he would do all of that. These days, it's hard to find somebody willing to do all of that work for free. And we were hoping that perhaps the city could help us out with that. You know, maybe this is something we would have to have a separate, you know, meeting about as far as, you know, what can be done and how help could be given. But I was just really hoping you would consider, you know, maybe having somebody from one of the crews come out and, you know, maybe do our lawn mowing for us, our, our trimming. Basically, the stuff that, that Wes did, I know last year you helped with the, with the spraying and it's, it's a great place to visit, unfortunately, even though I'm not as, what's the word I'm looking for? Even though I'm not a full-time employee anymore, I still, I still hear the complaints. And one of the, one of the main comments is the curb appeal out there and the problem is, is just too much for our small pool of volunteers to handle and we lost the guy who could handle it and our pool of volunteers isn't getting any younger and not growing any larger either, so we really hope that you would consider helping us out with our, with our maintenance this year on the grounds, so. Are there any questions?
Anybody? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
We'll be in touch. All right, no action on those since those are budget items. So then we will go back up to, or the continued place in the fire wellness plans, what's going on there. And one, one answer, Sean, to your question, federal government has a lot more latitude than the lesser forms of government do and can provide all kinds of chaplaincy, all their different denominations and religion that there, there is a little different there. And every city is different too, as to what they can handle, but you are going to send those, to those individuals?
And I will request Pamela give us a written comment on the chaplaincy.
Jeff, do you want to reopen?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Close the hearing, open the council meeting. Anything else I've done wrong?
Is that rhetorical?
Okay. Anything else on that? Any other directions for staff?
So we're looking at setting a public, full council meeting, as we'll have to call it, regardless of whoever shows up, is what that thought is.
It appears to be the, it might be the, the most drawn out, but the best way to get this taken care of if we're going to put something in place by January first, which.
So are you thinking a day meeting and a night meeting, just looking at the calendar just a little bit?
That'd be a night meeting.
How far out do we have to post those?
Three.
Three, three days.
So we can still do it this week?
No.
No.
Well, you could do it Friday night.
Yeah.
If we get the information back. But it doesn't make sense to me if we don't have the right information.
So we'll wait for Renee to get the information.
Then we'll set something, we'll check, check everybody's calendars and try and set something three days out from when we can. Hey, then whole business item B, Street Improvement Project, change order number thirty-five and we're on, oh, change order on page thirty-five. That would be a lot. Yep.
In your packet is a copy of a change order from Voss for the twenty nineteen improvement project. They continue to work on the project, but obviously the completion date was this, ended this week and given some of the weather primarily over the past two months, so they're, they've lost quite a few days of work, so they're requesting an extension to November fifteenth. And also they're requesting that if the weather doesn't allow the bid alternate number three work, which would be the extension of Second Street, be held off till next spring.
I move to approve change order number two, granting the contract extension until November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LaBeau to approve change order number two, granting the contract extension November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Discussion? All in favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? Anything else on the street improvement project?
Uh, no, they continue to work. They're hoping to have the streets all paved by the end of the week. Concrete work's being done right now. So things are continuing to move.
In close. All right, then.
Does the action address the request to wait till spring on bid alternate three or do you need something?
That is part of the change order.
That was part of it.
Okay, then the airport teahanger and we have a noticeable award for the teahanger project. Do you want to update anything around on that or Chuck?
Other than we did have the pre-construction meeting, was it last week? And the plan would be, weather permitting, we're looking at, starting possibly next week, the site work and puddings, et cetera. The building, I believe, would be scheduled for about in February with completion next July, correct?
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve notice of award for the airport teahanger project. Second.
Motion, second motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore to approve the notice of award for airport teahanger project. Discussion? All in favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? And note also from the Airport Commission, the next flight is scheduled for August ninth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Put that on your calendars and that'll actually be coming to the council for formal request to move on.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, yep. That'll be on a future agenda to actually approve that, that's the plan anyway. That is it for business, correct? We have informational, the meeting schedule's coming up for the next two months, the report from West Central Sanitation, a report for the Fire Department, notice of the Highway twenty-three Commission General Membership Meeting and a notice of another potential solar garden that would be constructed just to the north of the city here, north and maybe just a little west. And then we will be going into closed session to discuss an offer on real property located one two two Washburn Avenue. Parcel number is listed there as well and we would ask our city attorney, public affairs director and our city engineer to stick around. Megan has to leave. Go home, back to the kids.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Megan.